This conference will now be recorded.
Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our November 9th, 2023 Board of County Commissioners meeting. So all the commissioners know there's been a kind of a change in our system here. You no longer need to push a button, so our mics will be recording full time. And then if you want to cancel, you just push and hold that and it'll cancel. We're positive the mic for you. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until that matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 2410153B2. I will call this meeting to order. And Jarrett, would you lead us in the pledge?
You betcha.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 p.m. to 1:15 p.m. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Commissioners, reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Mike, we'll start with you.
We had the hospital board discussion on the status of the ambulance was probably one of the biggest, and then we went through an audit. So other than that, there's really nothing to report.
Yeah, I went to the public lands meeting Monday night, and on the wild horse thing, got with Bert on that, and gonna set up a meeting with him. We're gonna try to get the counties together to sue BLM or whatever, to get the wild horse problem fixed. That's about all, I guess.
Okay, thanks, Jarrett. I have nothing to report. Kathy?
No.
Okay. We'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commission. As you'll notice in your packet, there is no bill run. We will ratify that at the next commission meeting. We will still pay our bills, but it'll just be ratifying like we did in the past, so it won't be a preapproval just because we're having some system difficulties right now. So hopefully this coming week, we have some of them resolved. And then the most important thing, I think, that I wanted to get done today is we have a gentleman here, old Jerry Russell. He's retired with 28 years of service to Lander County, and we got him a plaque. I think the man who's worked with him the most here is Don Prince. And I'd like, Don, to present him with that plaque. Maybe we can get a picture of him with the commission and, you know, show some appreciation to him. I know that Jerry's one of the men in this world that I really look up to. I've never heard him say a bad word about a soul. And I look forward to harassing him in his retirement. That's for certainty.
I look forward to harassing him.
[laughing]
Jerry, we appreciate you for 28 years. Pleasure working with you.
Thank you very much.
Maybe we can all pile in a little bit. Congratulations, Jerry.
Thank you, Brian.
28 years?
Twenty-eight and a half. They're pretty awesome. Pretty awesome.
All righty, guys. Thanks very much.
Will you jump in here with us?
Sure.
You bet.
I'm over here. Well.
We'll see you down there.
Now, you stay right there.
You stay right there.
Ah, all right.
I'm gonna need to get back a little bit, Jarrett.
I can do that.
Okay.
I just heard somebody say you never said a bad word to anybody.
Okay, you know about it.
I can.
Thank you.
We sure love you, Jarrett. We're certainly gonna miss ya.
I tried talking to Johnson to come in with me this morning. What do they have there?
I like having a copy with you. I'll put on some more.
All right.
One other plaque that we do have is for Ms. Patsy Waits. She chose to probably have this mailed to her, so I'm gonna bring a card around to each of you, and maybe we can put a little something kind in there and ship this off to her. So them are the two things that we have going on. Some of that's on the agenda ahead of us here, so that's all I have for today.
Okay, thanks, Bert. We'll move into public comment. This is for non-agenda items only. Is there public comment? Yes, ma'am?
I don't know. Is it working?
You don't have to push it.
Oh, same with this. Okay, I thought maybe it was different down here. Pam Harrington, for the record, one of the newest employees for Lander County, working in the natural resource officer role. And I just wanted to make sure I let you guys know a little bit about a couple of things that are going on in the next month, because we're not gonna meet again as a commission until December, I believe. So, yeah, so just a couple of kind of exciting things. The Gold Rush Project, which is mostly in Eureka County, but that's going through the final environmental impact statement review, and they're expecting to have the recorded decision out in early December. So that's a big deal around here. It'll be 470 new employees, no, 570, sorry, 570 new employees, and it'll go for 24 years is what they're planning on. And there's a tiny little piece of the project that's Lander. So I had to call Scott Distel over in BLM and say, what is it? What's going on? That little piece in Lander, because it's hard to tell. But I did. I kinda got it. It's the way into the portal to get into the underground. So it's just this little piece of Lander County that's next to the Cortez Mine, where you can go into the portals, actually, in Eureka. But I just wanted you guys to know that part, because it's kinda interesting. Yeah, and then the other one is the Robertson Mine that I've been working on for you guys. We're going, I have to actually leave in a little bit for a cooperating agency meeting on the proposed mitigation measures for that project. And the cooperating agencies will submit our comments on where it's at now by November 27th. So that's just a couple of dates that we're not gonna see each other for until December. I thought I'd let you know about. So Bert and I will be working on that. I think we have some good value-added that we can do there. And then it goes to the public in early 2024 is where that stands. So that's really about it. Just, it's pressing, so I thought I'd let you know during public comment, because we didn't have a chance to put me on the agenda. In the future, as things are, I would make sure that we organize and put things on the agenda so you guys can respond more and, you know, get me to work on whatever way you want me to, whatever comes up into the future natural resources. So that's it.
All right. Well, thank you, Pam, for the update. Is there any more public comment for non-agenda items? Okay. We'll move into the consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action, without, with one action without extensive discussion. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for reviewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, we have approval of November 9th, 2023 Agenda Notice. Two, we have approval of October 12th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. Three, we have approval of October 26th, 2023 Meeting Minutes. And four, we have approval of payroll change requests.
I'll make a motion that, because we only have the one minute, the one minute, right? So I'll make a motion that we approve number one and number two.
Okay, so we have a motion for one and two.
A second.
And Jarrett, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move into item one for discussion of possible action to approve or disapprove the payment of bills. So we didn't have a bill run, but we do have some bills that need to be ratified. And so if there's no questions, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the payment of bills.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We'll move into item two for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, renewal, modification, or quit to bid to Swanson, Bellinger, and something contract. Good morning, Todd. Good morning.
Okay, Lakin Sullivan, who's last for the record.
Carl Swanson.
I think that one might have been set to stay on. I'm not sure why.
So we just press it again? Is it on pause right now?
Can you tap it, please?
No, we just tapped the mic.
I think it's recording. I can hear it.
We're okay?
So this is just brought back for you guys to approve the renewal for two years for Kyle, and there is an increase from the previous contract, but he did have to stipulate two more hours in there based on those recommendations.
What was the increase in hours? There was just a lot of different sheets on there, so I was kind of confused by that. But what was the overall actual increase in hours?
So he, so we have to put that he is willing to set aside 1,393 hours for Lander County, because that's what was determined in their study that we should be able to meet if the need arises. He's not working that many hours right now, but he has to stipulate that he will if the need arises.
And that's 1,030, you said?
393. 1,393.
Kathy, did you have a question?
No, because we pretty much found it out, I think, most, I did anyway, last meeting, for the understanding on my behalf. We found it most of that out last meeting, so I'm good.
Okay.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Okay. Is there any public comment on the issue? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
So really quick, I don't think you guys have the corrected one.
They updated contract?
We had to make some last-minute changes today.
Yeah, we had some discussions with the state Department of Energy and Defense Services yesterday, and they clarified that their old contracts contain work for what we call 432B cases, which is child protection cases. Those, however, should be separate from this contract, and they advised doing a second contract just for those, because those are not reimbursable. Only work done for criminal defendants and juveniles is reimbursable. So they suggested a separate contract just for those matters.
Okay, and we don't have that contract in our thing. So it'd be a separate contract with you, correct? So we'd have two separate contracts?
So we chose not to do that. So I spoke to Marcy through email this morning, and I explained to her that we would like to leave it all in one contract, and she said that was okay as long as it was clearly defined that 1,393 hours does not go towards the 432B.
Okay, so that's an additional to that 1,393 hours.
Yes.
Bill, did you have something?
Just real quick, I did go over the contract. As you've kind of heard hinted already, we get reimbursed for a large part of this, and I agree with the idea that we should just have one contract. It's not, you know, it's not the state's contract. At some point, they may, who knows, they may take it over and do all that stuff on their own, but I would hope not. But for now, yeah, just renewing his contract basically under similar language as the previous one is all we're doing. And like you heard, DIDs, as we call them, Department of Energy and Defense Services, for their own purposes seems to want to have, you know, things separated, and there's just no real reason for it. It's not directly their contract. But as long as their purposes are identified, they should be fine. So hopefully, we will be able to go forward with this. If not, both parties can modify the contract. As a DIDs has kittens over it, we can modify the contract down the road, because it does have the 30-day out, so.
And you actually looked at the correct contract, not the one we have in our back?
I looked at a more updated one. Whether it's the correct one at this point, I'm not 100% sure, because they've been changing this stuff.
Yes, he was on the email for the final one.
Bill was?
Yeah, I've gotten up to now if they don't change their mind. Keep in mind, there were discussions going on just yesterday.
Okay.
And what you have is not going to be a final one either, because I eliminated any records of 432B cases at their suggestion. And this morning, we're hearing we want that all in one contract, so I'm gonna have to add that back in. No, I didn't. I didn't grasp it for a third time. So then the issue comes up as to, because that is separate from Energy and Defense Services that provide for adults and juveniles, as to whether or not the compensation for 432B is going to also be separate. You might have noticed in the packet, look in the packet, that Mineral County did that. The public center down there gets one fee, one compensation for Energy and Defense Services, and another, he gets $15,000 for the child protection cases. And so in revising this contract again, I think we have to clarify as to what the compensation is going to be for the 432B services. I did sort of look it up in terms of the hours that I have put in on those kinds of cases. You know, the past year, it's been 89.7 hours. We talked yesterday in our conference call about the county eventually looking at about $165 an hour for conflict work. And so I just used that as a basis, and $165 an hour times 89.7 would be $14,800 a year. So it's almost exactly what Mineral County paying, $15,000. So I'd add these back to the proposal for those kinds of cases.
So right now, what we do is, when I do the quarterly report to DIDs for reimbursement, I subtract out his civil hours and any 432B hours, so we can't ask for reimbursement for that. So we're still compensating him for those hours, but we can't get reimbursed for them. So I thought it would be okay to just leave it at a $190 annually, and then if he goes over the 1,393 hours for criminal, then we would start compensating him on an hourly rate, but if he needs a purpose one.
Okay. Well, the division thought that the $190 was reasonable for just the criminal work. It was a county's possession that had nothing to do with the 432B.
That's probably up to you guys. If we do that, we would probably need to separate it out into another contract.
So did you guys, did you, the meeting that I missed, did you discuss this issue?
On the fourth, I don't think we did. We didn't discuss the 432B, and I was gonna ask you on that. How many, every year, as far as how many are going up? I know they're going up. I know they're not going down. And so how many do you think a year are those cases? And I know that they're lengthy and they don't get solved quickly. How many a year do you think that you're doing, just out of?
Well, like I said, with the last year, I totaled my hours up just for those cases, and it was 89.7 hours.
I have a question. I was asked if you're adding, modifying it and adding the juvenile cases.
Juvenile are reimbursable, so yeah, that's part of the contract.
Just if it, I guess she's just asking if it's specifically going in there. And no one can hear that mic. They can't hear you talking.
There you go. I got it, man. Robert fixed it.
Thank you, Robert.
I T-guy. Got a new electrical engineer.
Do any other commissioners have any questions? Any other public comment? Okay, I'll, we'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the renewal modification for Swanson, Bellinger, and Pembleton contract.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So did you guys decide what you want to do with the, you want the 432B added back into this contract?
Yeah, we just have one, a basic, one simple contract, as long as language is in there specifying, yeah.
Is that all right with you?
Are you okay with that?
All right. So, and so your position is no extra compensation for the 432B? I suppose I'd agree with that. I considered it all part of my contract before, and just because DIDs now wants to separate them out to make it a counting, not a counting nightmare, like it's not a county, but they think it is, I just assume that it's all included, so that's fine.
All right, good. So thank you. We'll move into item three. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the Austin Community Center and Medical Clinic Initial Design or make modifications. So we're going to table this, correct?
Correct. I need this table, because we need to bring back a not-to-exceed number from our engineer.
Okay. So we'll table that. Four, we're gonna table as well for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the Battle Mountain Fire Hall Initial Building Design or make modifications, as well as deciding whether to raise the power poles in an estimate of $119,706.50. We'll be tabling that as well.
So real quick, while we're on that, I would like to make the commission aware so we can proceed forward with finalizing our payment for that property, that the power lines are, I think they're 23 feet off the ground, and more than enough to, even if we raise the grade over there five feet, we could still pull fire trucks under them and around them. We can actually get an additional five feet on top of that if they remove the cable that's below that, that they don't know who's supposed to be on. It's like a TV cable or something like that, but NV Energy doesn't know who that belongs to.
And going underground's not an option? Would it be?
Not really.
Not really?
Nope.
Probably three times.
It'd be spinning. Very spinning.
All right. So we'll table that item as well. Thank you, Bert. We'll move to, is, we have Dr. Herman here? Okay, so we're gonna table five as well, which was for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the contract for services as EMS, EMS Medical Director between Lander County and Dr. Paul Herman, M.D. We'll table that. We will move into item six for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove making the two part-time positions in the Austin Justice of the Peace to a one full-time position and allow the court to continue to use a previous employee as a relief clerk when needed until next budget year. At that time, the Austin Justice of the Peace will then ask for the full-time position and one part-time position to be approved.
So Judge Gendoffel is on. Lakin and I have kind of gone back and forth on this of how to make this work for the budget. He's always had two part-time positions. His first part-time position, she retired, so now we got a new one in there, but there is a second part-time that is wanting to leave. So that leaves only one part-time in there that doesn't cover the shift, and Judge Gendoffel can talk to that as far as that. So our suggestion was making the one that's in there part-time a full-time for the rest of this year and possibly ask the previous retired employee if she would be relieved until we can get another part-time position in there.
So we're not, we're not, so we're not necessarily increasing hours. We're just basically?
We're just making the one full-time to cover the two.
That's right, because the relief person will only, in case that person can't be around, they'll come in to kind of correct that post.
Correct, but they will, because this will be a full-time, it will be benefited, so it may put that salary line in the red, and Lakin is aware.
Yeah, so that'd be the only thing, is that you're adding a full-time position, which would be a benefit to purse. That's right.
Yes.
Which is actually an increase.
Is my understanding, and the judge can talk to this, is the previous first retired employee is willing to be relieved for a while if the current employee there now needs to take a day off or something here and there. She is willing to assist.
Yeah, I just, I mean, I hate to add a full-time position if we don't have to. I mean, it's just, you're just making more big government. Billy, what do you, you have comments on it?
Yeah, I'm here. I wanted to be down there, but they obviously have the highway closed, so sorry for being over the phone with it. But it was a full-time position previously before Donna came on. Donna's the clerk that wants to retire right now, and she's been there for 15 years. And it was a full-time. They couldn't hire a full-time, so then they started picking up part-time shifts, and they've been splitting them. And now, after 15 years, Donna wants to go, which I completely understand. And I've got Emily in there. I've had Emily since February, and, I mean, I couldn't have asked for a better employee. And I think that the court would be better served with that full-time employee. It just would streamline things. There wouldn't be that transition every week, because I have their shifts kind of switching. And realistically, I don't know if I could very soon fill another part-time position. I think that's better for the court. I think Emily deserves it. She's learned everything that was thrown at her, and I think that it would be a good long-term kind of employee and asset to the justice court here. So it's not, I know it seems like adding a full-time, but it's going back to a full-time when we couldn't fill a full-time before.
Thank you, Billy, for that clarification. Commissioners, do you have any questions? Is there public comment on the issue? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
A motion to approve making the two part-time positions in Austin Justice of the Peace to a one full-time position and allow the court to continue to use the previous employee as a relief clerk when needed until next budget year. Do I go the rest?
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to item seven. For discussion of possible actions, approve, disapprove the engineering services proposal for water system improvements at Austin Airport, including water, tank, truck field, and booster pump station in amount not to exceed $46,000.
Good morning, Commission. This is a proposal from Dave Engineering, Marty, Dave is nearing this, we budgeted for this project down in Austin Airport to improve this well and bring a couple tanks in there to build airplanes and water trucks, right, we, why do you?
This, so since it is an improvement to our airport, can we, we can't use like our cost share on this, or?
A cost share like SM.
Our airport engineer, like our FAA grantee?
Oh, J U B?
Yes, J U B.
I don't know. That's a good question. Oh, a good question.
So I don't think that we, that we qualified for the grants on this, so you have to have so much traffic, and you have to have so many things to justify the grants of J U B.
So basically, all those grants are typically Battle Mountain. We don't really get them for?
Well, he, we use him often, but he's usually on the bigger side of things down there. This is fairly small.
So that, yeah, the FAA will put certain criterias in for certain grants, and water typically is not one of them.
Right, right. Very strict with the asphalt and runway.
Okay. Commissioners, have any questions? Is there any public comment on the issue? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
A motion to approve the engineering services proposal for the water system improvements at the Austin Airport, including a water tank, truck field, and booster pump station in the amount not to exceed $46,000.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion. Mike, Kathy seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys. We'll move to item eight for discussion of possible action to get direction to move forward with a site license agreement with Lander County and Sky Fiber Internet to build a new repeater site to serve the community with high-speed internet on county property above the BM Mountain. The board to approve the specific property description. Do we have anybody here from Sky Fiber? So basically?
So commissioners, we actually started to draft a site license agreement in this, but as going forward and pulling the maps, which I believe is in your backup, there's only a very small section in that area that's actually Lander County. So we chose, and I think in their agenda request form, it was specifically asking for us to move, get the permission to be able to negotiate a site license agreement. So we kept it that way, because you guys are gonna have to specifically put- put the detail of the section of the property of which we don't have that yet, so...
The, so we're moving, so where's the current repeater?
This is a third one, so...
So this is an addition to what we already have?
This is another one. So this one they want to put over by the BM Mountain. They have the one on the water tower and I believe Mount Louis.
Yes, so currently they have one out there, but it's on Nevada land's property, and I think there's some change going on there. So they're asking to move it over to the counties. Um, one thing that we need to look into is if we're getting, if that's part of that land transfer, which I haven't had time to look at, that that is for, um, recreation, public purpose only, that we couldn't do anything for profit on that. So if they were running a business off of it and we're using that land for profit, then that changes things a little bit, so we need to make sure that we're cautious when we move forward on this one.
So should we just table it until we know factually?
That would, it would be best for us.
Okay, so, um, Commissioner, do you have any concerns on it or questions?
I agree.
Okay, we're, we're just going to table this item until we can, uh, know more for certain, so... Okay, we'll move to item nine. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the MOU between Lander County and Lander County Law Enforcement Agency. Good morning.
Good morning, commissioners. Phil Harry for the record, operating engineers. So if we could, commissioners, I'd like to combine nine and ten together to get the same formatted letter for the MOU.
Perfect, that works. Let me open up ten. Um, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the MOU between Lander County and the Lander County Sheriff's Association. So we're discussing both items.
So, um, in discussions with the inner sheriff quick, uh, there's still a staffing shortage in the, uh, dispatch center. And this, uh, MOU we did six months ago, uh, this would just be an extension to that MOU, um, for another six months to allow the staffing to hopefully come to full staff. Uh, my understanding is, is that, uh, there's a few people that are interest, have interest in getting hired and going through the background process. So, other than that, it's just the same MOU as we had and, uh, a six-month extension.
How many people are you still short, Robert?
Robert Quick for the sheriff's office. Currently, we're sh- uh, well, currently we're short one in full-time staff. We just transferred to journey, somebody dispatched to the, to train, and then we have one currently in background for full-time.
Alright, Commissioner, do you have any questions? Okay, public comment on the issue? Okay, so I'll hear a motion both for nine and ten.
I'll make a motion that we approve the MOU between Lander County and the Lander County Law Enforcement Association, number nine and number ten. We're discussing what possible action to approve, disapprove the MOU between Lander County and the Lander County Sheriff Association.
Okay, so should we take each item as its separate motion, Bill? So, we have a motion for both.
Well, I'm confused on why the liquor board is part of that.
Hold on.
Is that a, is that a capo?
No, that shouldn't hang the one you're separating.
Okay, alright. No problem.
So, so my question, can we take, can we take it as one motion coming both, or should we take each one as its separate?
Since you've got them separated, you probably should keep it separate.
Okay, so we, uh, JR made a motion on number nine. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, and JR made a motion on number ten?
I'll second it.
And Mike seconds. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thanks, guys. Okay, we move to item eleven. For discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove specific terms and qualifications of the contract between Lander County and Curious Recovery and Behavioral Health Center, allowing residents to use their program for services at a cost to Lander County in an amount approved by the court. So I guess we had this on the last meeting and they deferred it to this meeting before I was gone, so...
Morning.
Morning.
Uh, Troy, owner of Curious Recovery.
Howdy, Troy.
There y'all.
Oh, they have them, okay.
Okay, Troy, so why don't you bring me up to speed, uh, what I missed last meeting?
So it, it was just a, uh, introduction. We did a slideshow on who we are, what we, what we do, uh, what we're wanting to do for Lander County and what we've been doing for Lander County. Um, since this contract has been put in, plays have been revised. We've worked with two families from Lander County. Uh, we have, as of yesterday, sixteen people waiting for this thing to hopefully be approved so we can help them as well. The two families that we have, uh, we have worked with now are, have the opportunity to be a family in next court. Um, talking with their DCFS, uh, them calling us and saying, "I don't know what you guys are doing with, with these guys, but I, I've never seen them this way." Um, I'm excited for them to go to court. It's the first time they've said that since this whole process has happened. Um, again, I'm not boasting, it's, they put in the work, uh, they did the, they did all the work. Moving forward, I just, you know, we're, last thing we want to do is, is tell another Lander County client to, uh, to wait for help. So we're hoping with this meeting to solidify this contract so we can start doing the things that, uh, we really want to do in Lander County. It's not just to keep our clients, we want to do community events, community awareness, we want to get in schools, we want to get in jail. Uh, we have programs already built for it. Obviously, we're going to crawl before we walk, we're going to get, you know, Lander County residents taken care of first and then expand when needed.
So why don't you step me through, so I fully understand, like, you have somebody that needs help. And just kind of step me through exactly what you do and how help is provided to that person.
Sure, so if they contact us, um, obviously we do our initial assessment to determine if they are a fit for the program. If, I mean, there's not a lot that we can't handle. Obviously schizophrenia and, and higher-end, uh, mental, mental health is, is referred out to our clinical director who is, uh, Janelle Anderson. She owns Quest Life, or Light Quest, in Elko. She has, uh, currently ten LCSWs underneath her. Uh, we never usually together. So after the assessment, we kind of, you know, we, we assign a recovery coach. And recovery is, is a broad term. Don't take it out as just, uh, substance abuse or alcoholism, but mental health and behavioral health. So we appoint them a recovery coach and we start building a program, uh, specific to them and what they need, uh, to move them forward to healthier life. So the program is, we give them the option to get as much treatment as they can. So we're open five days a week from nine o'clock to seven thirty. We give them the option to come all day, every day. There's no set schedule, there's no, I mean, get as much as you can. In this program, uh, we do psycho-social education, peer support groups, uh, yoga, fitness, uh, meditation. We do breathwork, trauma healing, uh, and a lot of holistic approaches to, uh, trauma itself. At thirty days, we do review, uh, their programs to see how they're doing. Uh, they, uh, the assessment shows that they, they need more treatment. We're, we're going to refer to, uh, stay either in our facility or, you know, um, offer maybe a less, lesser, uh, program, you know, less, less intense program, um, so they can keep getting aftercare. I mean, we do have aftercare with our recovery coaches that we do recommend after the program. So after that, we, we, we stay in contact with them, we, we give them the opportunity to have alumni meetings with us, uh, stay a part of the Curious family and, um, stay a part of their community.
Okay, so I noticed there's a Car- uh, Carrios Recovery out of Texas. Are you, are you part of them?
No, I didn't know that.
Yeah, so, so completely separate?
Right.
Okay, um, so, Mike, you have something?
Yes, Mike Kong, Chief Deputy DA, Lander County. Question, and I'm hearing some information here for the first time today as it relates to, um, specifically treatment. Are you stating that you provide licensed substance and alcohol abuse treatment?
Licensed, yeah, I mean, it's, so we're peer support specialist and trauma specialist.
So you're licensed through the state of Nevada?
Yeah.
That, that information has not been provided to, uh, to the county. And in fact, and I don't know that the three names that were included in the, um, information that was provided, the packet, um...
No licensure?
Yeah, those, those three names, when I, when I, there's an online check for the licensing through the board of, of substance abuse counselors, I did not find those, those names. Now, if, if you're talking about support, that's different, but if you, I, I, I guess I'm asking for clarification. One, whether there's certificates with the state of Nevada, because they have not been provided.
I guess, yeah, I guess I'm good to go.
And, and who, which names, which, what are the names of the individuals that are licensed within the state of Nevada?
So it's Paul Romero? That's my director of programs.
Last name was Romero?
Yes, sir.
And that, that was on, I don't have that, but Howard Merrill?
Yeah, but to...
And Arias came to do a lot of Martinez. Now, there were, there were two documents that were included in the packet, um, from the University of Nevada, or some of those ones. Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, so it took us out, uh...
That's, yeah, that's, that's not from, that's not a license for treatment. Uh, that, that's a program the university offers. I'm talking about through the state of Nevada, a license to, to provide treatment.
So peer support, uh, specialists are legally allowed to buy recovery programs with a clinical director. So our clinical director is, is, works hand-in-hand with us to, uh, either approve or disapprove the recovery program that we have.
Have, have you provided, who's the clinical director?
Uh, Janelle Anderson.
And have you provided those, those, uh, credentials to, to the camp?
No, and I, and I can do that. I did not provide that. I will do that, yes, sir. Um, so what we do, why are recovery centers different is we're not, we're not a clinical rehab. Uh, we take a different approach. It's a definitely, definitely, uh, a holistic approach, but it's, it's been proven effective. Recovery coaching and peer supports are growing and their, their effects are, not a lot of people get, uh, comfortable with counselors and clinicians and having them relive traumas back over and over and over again. The whole point of them being here is to heal from those, to move forward. So with our psycho-social education, the things that we teach them allows them to do that, which allows them to navigate their own trauma by themselves without reliving it over and over and over again, because that can be very detrimental. With our recovery program, we'll be, the addiction's the easy part, that's what falls off, that falls off easily. The hard part is their mental health and their behavioral. Keeping those there, keeping them with the tools that they need to stay recovered is what we provide.
So I have a question for you, something, you stated you helped two families here in Lander County, so who footed the bill for that?
I'm sorry?
Who footed the bill for it? Who paid for it, that service?
The, no one's paid yet, so we're...
So are you a nonprofit?
Yes, we are, but, uh, this is a for-profit and LLC as well. I have a nonprofit, um, it should be federally designated by next month, I hope.
So, I just have some statements to make. So my, my first, my first thing about this was asking Lander County to foot the bill for this. So, mental health is, over the years, has been, become this, like, this coin phrase that everybody just throws money at. And nationally, we spend more money on mental and behavioral health than we ever have. But yet statistically, it's rampant.
Right.
It's like, so, it doesn't take a genius to figure it out.
Right.
The money's not doing the damn thing. These people aren't being helped, right?
Right.
And you, you start to look at these, uh, these physicians that prescribe the drugs, that I have to say that most of them have a black box warning, right, increased, uh, chances of suicide and homicide.
Absolutely.
Right, you start researching all these, these, uh, mass shootings. Some of the things in common is they were under psychiatric care or under psychiatric drugs. So it's like, and then we're asking taxpayers to foot this, to foot a portion of a bill of something statistically nationally that doesn't seem to be working. I have a problem with that. If it were my own money, I'd say, "No, I'm sorry." If you've got somebody who wants, send them my way, we'll go out, we'll walk that mountain out there. You know, physical health is mental health, is, is what I believe, right?
Absolutely.
And it's like, what is the willingness of the individual that wants to be helped? What it, what are they wanting to do? Are we enabling them? Are we giving them a hand up? So it's just, I, I just, I have a problem with taxpayers paying for something where it is pay for pro- I mean, you are making profit on it, and, and I'm not bagging on the fact that you want to help people. I think that's a genuine, I believe that's great. I feel more people want to help, but I feel some of the techniques that are used or people that are used is just, it's not effective. I mean, it's just, and I'll argue this with anybody.
No, I don't.
The amount of money they spend, but yet it's still rising. Mental health is still rising.
Absolutely.
It doesn't, it doesn't fix the damn thing.
Mr. Marx, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent. So that's, that's why I created this. I mean, not, I'm not putting down clinicians whatsoever, they hold a place. But clinicians, um, their practice usually is a habit of trying to find what's wrong with the person. It's not what we do. We try to look at their strengths, find their strengths with them, and then grow off of that. Everything that we do is not the, you know, sit in front of you and ask you how you're feeling that day or ask you to relive your traumas all the time. There's no point in that, it already happened. For, for us and our, our approach to it, and being peer support specialists and trauma specialists, we understand that there is, we're not naive to the fact that there is a liability to navigate trauma with them, uh, and, and stay within our scope of practice, but we never have to ask them what happened. We don't, we don't need to know that. All we need to know is your willingness to change. If you have that, we can help you. And the fam- the two families that came and saw us, it, it's been undeniable, they were done. They were wanting help. We understand that we're going to have people that are not going to want that help, but our program, what we teach, becomes attractive enough to at least have them open their eyes, open their ears. Once we have that, we got them.
I have something to say, as I'm sitting here pondering. There's something I'm going to have to disagree with you with, because when you're talking about trauma and that it's already happened and to move on, that never, sir, um, with all due respect, that never happens. And unless you deal with the, the trauma, um, of what truly happened and, um, that you truly deal with that experience and accept that experience and start to move on, all you're doing is pushing down a ball. And for the meantime, what you're doing, I'm not, please don't take it that I'm bagging, because I, trust me, I'm for holistics as, with the best that you can. However, I'm also for accepting and understanding why somebody is doing something, because they're, when they're behaving the way they are, there's always, it's cause and effect, always, and until you treat the cause, you'll never get the effect of functionality, you just will not. So I will have to disagree, um, for one, thirty years of working within the sheriff's department and the things that have come in there, and then not only that, the people that I've worked with throughout many years, that, I'm sorry, that part I'm going to have to, the holistic part, absolutely. A day-to-day will make people feel better, but until you deal with the initial problem, uh, that you will never fix, because then they just have something, a flashback, and they're right back where they, they felt great yesterday, but then they have the flashback of where they were, what caused the problem to begin, so...
I absolutely agree with you. I, I might have framed that wrong, and I'm sorry you took it that way, but yeah, it's, I mean, the whole reason addiction happens is because of trauma. I mean, addiction's not the issue, it's, it's what led them to that. And I'm not saying that, you know, trauma just pushes down like a beach ball. We call it the beach ball check, so when you push a beach ball down in, in water, it always wants to pop back up, right? It's, it's allowing them to acknowledge that that happened, it's to face the demon, right, face the monster. Once we acknowledge it, we want to move on from it. We don't want to keep reliving it. That's, that's the point I was trying to make, and, yeah, I might have, I should have reframed that a little better, but, um, no, there's undeniable that trauma breeds mental illness, mental, you know, and behavioral health issues. That's what, that's what it is. But when we can navigate it within their, our clients, let them know, like, the trauma happened, it is a part of you. And whether you let it determine who you are now is what we teach. And there's validity to that too as well, so like, for me, the reason that peer support specialists are so effective is because we have that relativity. We've lived experience. I've had addiction and mental health for most of my adult and, and teenage life.
Have you ever worked with Teen Challenge?
I do, I did, actually, yeah.
So we had a, a young man from here that went to Teen Challenge, did very, very well. And what they ended up, when they ended the program, when the one, first thing he said when he came out is he didn't even know that he was a human being. The one thing that he, they weren't taught though, when they, um, went in, is that if you get in an accident and get hurt, you need to make sure that you tell emergency services that you're an addict. Nobody bothered to teach him that, goes in, slices his hand halfway off. They give him pain medicine and there he is now, still fighting that same addiction, being clean for three years. So I just think, uh, Teen Challenge is one of my favorite programs. I mean, people might disagree, but the people that we've sent from here that have gone through have been very successful in there, in that, and so, and that's an in-house, you know, program, so...
I mean, I, I don't think it's a doubt that people want to help, but it's just, I don't think it needs to be the burden of the taxpayer. There's so many federal programs out there, grant money, when you start building a program based around mental and behavioral health, money that you can access. I mean, it's all taxpayer dollars, but I personally am responsible for Lander County's taxpayers' dollars, and it's just...
I hate to interrupt, but on this contract, this is for opioid settlement money.
I understand that.
So it's not directly taxpayers.
It is taxpayers' dollars, Bill. I mean, it's like, it's money that we have that we can put into other facilities, other services that can be used completely differently. So I, so I disagree with you.
It has to be used.
But I'm very aware that we could use opioid money.
But it has to be used for opioid.
I understand that.
Treatment. Okay. Just want to make sure you're aware of that.
Okay, so they bring somebody in who's an alcoholic or who's addicted to marijuana. It's not per se opioid.
I'm not arguing in their favor. I'm just trying to correct the record.
Right? Where do you, where do you define that line? So basically, I was just saying that I don't believe that it becomes the burden of the taxpayers. I mean, it's just, yeah, I just, I'm just, me personally, that's, that's how I feel about it. And again, I'm not bagging on you, Troy.
No, I, I understand. Mr. Sparks, I, I, I hear you, and I understand where your position and your responsibility with Lander County. Um, right, when I came and met Bert, uh, I made obligations to myself and, and my staff did as well to Lander County. Uh, there was no one out here providing services for them. Um, when I heard of the opportunity to do that, there was no way, my director of, uh, programs and my director of, uh, operations are from Lander County. They were born and raised here. So they had a personal vendetta within, you know, themselves to help Lander County clients because they've been there, they've known that. They know the culture here. They know that there's no outlets, you know, other than a couple of resources. My goal and my, my vision for Lander County isn't just the residents. I mean, it's, it goes a lot deeper than that. I want to get into schools and teach programs within the schools, stop suicide. I want to do suicide prevention programs. I want, I mean, the jails, I presented to your sergeant, uh, my reintegration program, uh, that allows these guys to have a fighting chance to get out and have tools so that this revolving door stops. I was a sergeant at Ely State Prison for five years. I've lived that. I know what these guys go through and I know what, I've, I've learned some things along the way.
Yeah. And it's like, I can appreciate that. And it's just statistically, the programs we've had in the past, I mean, I could, give me time, I could name a few off. Statistically, they don't prove out. And how many millions, how many billions of dollars, man hours have we provided into these things? It's just, and then, and then taxpayers pay this thing. This person comes in. They have no vested interest other than they want to get better. But it's like, where do they have to dig down deep to, you know what I'm saying? It's, and then do we not have AA or NA in Lander County anymore? Do we have these support?
That's what I was just gonna point out, is that's one of the reasons why I think that they have been invited here with open arms by, um, I mean, pretty much every department. I think the, the sheriff's department, the, um, I believe Dan Baldini and them, he, they've, they've been.
Justice court.
Justice court. They've been, they've been really kind of brought in and, um, no disrespect, but I want to make sure that these guys probably feel like they're getting, they're out here hung up to, to take a, take a lashing today after they've been welcomed with open arms because we are lacking so many of these services. Um, I a hundred percent agree with you. I think that physical health is mental health. And I think that most of the, the mental health problems we have now are privileged problems. Um, but that's not to say, you know, and I'm a recovering alcoholic, been clean for twenty years. But not everybody gets to ride that wagon and round them wheels out. And wheels stay square for a lot of people and that wagon's pretty bouncy. They don't have the family resources. They don't have the people. And that's what I think that Troy and his team are trying to bring here. His presentation to it and the, the documents, myself and, and our counsel has received his, no offense, Troy, but it's been kind of terrible. Um, but their, their presence as far as, um, being a part and helping the people that they've been involved with has been pretty impressive. So the, the results on one hand compared to the, the paperwork on the others, not as, they're polar opposites. When they have hands on and they're helping people, it's been, it's been outstanding. The every, I've never heard anything but positive about them. Um, the paperwork side, me and Troy want to kick each other full-time for. And Mike wants to kick all of us. So it's, uh, you know, I think trying to fill that void of AA, of NA, some of these meetings that aren't had here locally to give some, some opportunities to folks that, that maybe these guys can present. And that's why the, the courts and, and the sheriff's office and so many people are willing to try to give them a shot, I think, is that it's an intervention before we have people in these long-term where we're, where our taxpayer dollars are then paying for them for years on end because they're sitting in there getting three meals a day on us. So that, that's, you know, I just want to say that little piece for Troy because I know he's been through a lot here and.
Well, just to clarify for the record, I'm not lashing out.
No, and I.
But I'm just, I'm, I, I have a responsibility as a commissioner and, and the use of taxpayers' funds. And it's just, I've said my piece on it. I'm one commissioner.
I know, I understand.
And, uh, yeah, so that's where it is. Commissioners have any questions?
I, I do. Um, I, I agree with Kathy. Brian, I agree with parts I have done through the county. I, I worked at the Walker Center for three years. I didn't see the success. My concern is, is, goes more with, um, the, the, the assistant DA is, is, is the fact that my concern is, is when that trauma like Kathy talks about hits, you don't have, a, a certificate don't cover that. And it is going to hit. They have to, it has to be dealt with. But my firm belief, I like the holistic over the medication. I think medication's thrown too much. And I've also seen that success too. I, I, I can't myself support it without that piece.
Sure.
I, I mean, I would have to have him comfortably come in here and say, this documentation is here. This is, it's more than you are, you and our certificate. I mean, anybody can go spend a six-week cap, uh, a class and, and say they're certified into doing it. But boy, that stuff hits the surface. I, years ago, I, I, I had to lift the body of a dead twelve-year-old kid out of a facility. I won't do it again. And, and we had the professionals. So I, I like it. I, I believe in the holistic. But I still believe there's, there, there's a professional side to it. More than one person signing off on all, all of their, 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 there's, the, the floor workers, you know, because they're not going to be there twenty-four hours a day and you can't say they're there by a phone call.
Sure.
I, I, I think it has to be better prepared.
No, and I, I, I agree. Uh, I understand this isn't a, your, your typical recovery center. But what we're wanting to hopefully have you guys realize is that we're not, we're not, we're not necessarily trying to heal their trauma. It happens inevitably through our program. Uh, without, you know, and again, this is the holistic way of doing that. But at any time, and we have policy and procedures put in place with our clinical director, that at any time, you know, our client is out of scope for us, is what we refer to, our clinician. And any money that was going to be allocated to that individual itself, that money is paid for. They don't have to pay. And Lander County's not paying for our clinicians. It's part of the program.
The money's going somewhere. It has to pay staff.
Sure. But it's going to them getting clinical help if they need it. Um, and again, you guys, I understand. I mean, we're, I'm not a licensed clinician. I'm not a, I'm not a therapist. Um, that being said, the, the two families that I've had have been in therapy for eight years and haven't seen a change. It's gotten worse. And I'm not saying it was the therapist, the therapist's fault whatsoever. What I'm saying is that there's an alternative approach to allowing a client to be empowered and have them change themselves and, and guiding them to do that. That's what peer support specialists, what trauma specialists, that's what someone with lived experience and that relativity can do for somebody. Um, for me personally, when I had, when I went through my treatment, my clinician, I couldn't relate. I couldn't believe her because she's never lived the life that I have. I'm not saying that she isn't good at her job. What I'm saying that I, I feel comfortable with somebody who has a sense of empathy and relativity to me. It goes deeper. It allows them to heal their own trauma.
So is your program able to bill Medicaid?
Not yet. So peer support specialists are not, uh, paid out through insurance companies. And that's something that.
No, but if, if you're dealing with youth, there's, there's ways, and there's licensure's requirements.
Sure.
To where the, the programs offered with, with, and it's, there, there's a set amount that Medicaid pays for, for youth, right?
Yeah. Well, so Battleborn, uh, youth camp out there in Carlin, uh, they, I have a meeting with them right after this. Um, I had four of their kids come through our program and have excelled. They stopped, uh, they didn't drop out of the, uh, their program, but they didn't have to go there anymore because they weren't required to. Drug courts in Elko, uh, we've had a trial run with three of their, their clients. And they now want to do a contract with us. And I'm not boasting or anything. I'm just saying, you guys, like, what we're doing is working. And I know.
So will the drug.
I agree with Mr. Sparks's saying, the reason you can't change a person unless there's a whole person changed. It's mind, body, soul, and spirit. And that's what we attack. And, and I, I understand that trauma will be coming up to that. And the training that we do have, not only through life experience and what our program is, is, is allowing us to realize that and make the next step.
So will the drug court, so if you build a contract with the drug court, you are going to build a drug court?
Yes.
You're not building Elko, you're not building Elko County.
No.
So they ain't using the taxpayer money that, that, that we're set up here to represent?
I'm not sure on that. Yeah, I'm not sure how that works. Um, I'm.
I, I believe, I, I too support you. I like the holistic over, I, I, I thought what I did was a failure. I quit because same, same as if you have a bad therapist, you got to move on and find one that, that fits you. You know, I, I mean, but like I said, I, I know because of it, in my experience, there is monies out there that are already taxpayer money set aside for the funding of these programs.
Well, and that's, that was my, my point of making my knock wrong. I never wanted anybody to not, I did never want to tell anybody, no, I couldn't help you.
I understand. Commendable.
And that's, you know, the sixteen individuals that have came to us that we've done consultations with, we didn't take them on, uh, you know, do this agreement, but, uh, it'd break my heart to tell them that we can help them.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Any other commissioners have questions?
Mike, did you have anything?
I did. I'd like to refer to Judge To-.
Hi, Denise Fortune for our gentle justice court. I just want you to put it on the record that we had met with Kairos a while back, um, the juvenile department, um, the justice court. Uh, we've talked to the Lander County Sheriff's Office. Um, as far as the court is concerned, and I understand taxpayers' money, but I also look at it from the court's point of view, of which I've sat in there for twenty-eight years. And we do not have the resources here in Battle Mountain to help the people. We don't. We never have. We still don't have all the resources that we need to help the people that come before us. And there are some that, it's just their circumstances. It's not that they're drug addicts. It's not that they're troublemakers. It's just their circumstances. And that's just the hand that they were dealt with. We see that over and over and over and over again. There's a lot of drug problem in this town. We all know it. There's a lot of crime going on, drugs, drugs. Um, in this town, we all see it. The courts see it the most. And the jails sees it the most. And I think any benefit that we can help these individuals, um, in our county, I think we should do and help as much as we can to help these people that may not have other options. We have a kid in jail that, Mohammed is in there now, but he's been in there. It's his life circumstances. This kid has been in court. He's a good kid. We try to help him out as much as we can. He needs somebody else to talk to. And, uh, we reached out to Kairos and I believe Kairos was working with the jail. My court admin, who's not here, knows more about this. But, um, they're willing to go help our kids that are sitting in, and I say kids because, I mean, they're over eighteen, but to me, they're still kids. To help them with the underlying problems. And there's a lot of people in this town right now that need that. And I think any benefit and help that we can get through Troy or anybody else, we don't have the resources that we need in this county. And I think any, any help that we can give them to get the benefits, to help Lander County citizens and residents, I think we should try to do that as much as we can. So, thank you.
Thank you, Denise.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, yes, Michael Goleman again from Lander County DA's office. And I, I want to be clear, uh, clearer to both Troy here as well as the commission, that the questions or concerns I had is, is somewhat the, dealing with a moving target from the standpoint of not completely understanding what services are being provided or, or, um, you know, whether it's clinical, whether it's support outside of treatment. Uh, and some of it may be semantics. Uh, I do believe in, in, in looking at, uh, the, the opioid recoveries, uh, then litigation from that, the county did, uh, participate and we've had previously signed an agreement indicating that the, the county would report annually to, uh, the attorney general's office how they are spending the, uh, funds that have been recovered through the litigation as well as plans on how they plan to use it moving forward. And, and there's a, there's a, a list of, of different areas that, um, that can, that funds can be used and it's still associated with, with, uh, the, the opioid recovery, uh, or the address to addressing substance abuse in general. I think that support services such as this may, may fill one of those needs. Um, but from, from our standpoint and, and presenting an agreement to you, I think we can dial that in. But I also suggest that I think that the board or, uh, and working with county manager's office and finance needs to be able to put together a plan on how we are going to address the, the use of those funds that are earmarked or only used with substance abuse. And whether it's assisting drug courts or specialty courts at the adult criminals level or juvenile, whether it's assisting families that are, are, we've earlier heard discussions about kids that are in foster care. And a lot of those families are struggling with mental health and substances as well. And so I think that that, that type of framework would assist, uh, the community, but also assist the, the folks that work in the county in understanding the direction of this board of like, to see us move forward and, and trying to help our community and spend those funds that are earmarked.
Okay.
I have a quick question. So, um, Mike, is it something that we can, as far as, that we can do for a year and see what and where we are after a year? I mean, we do it, uh, in agreement with these guys for a year and, and then they come back and show us, because we have to report it as well, um, where those funds, they show us where and what they have been doing.
What their statistics are.
Yeah, so where, where and how many families are helping. And then we get information from detentions and then into information from justice courts so they can report in so we can see and have accurate information to report. Is that something that we can do?
Yeah, I, I, I believe you can. I, I think, I, they're, so when these monies, uh, well, when this litigation all started, uh, various cities or counties throughout the state and throughout the country for that matter, began suing either manufacturers or the, the pharmacy, uh, pharmacy companies, pharmaceutical companies. And Nevada, the attorney general's office and the, um, some of the primary plaintiff attorneys that were being hired by these local governments came together and, and brought that, that agreement that I think was brought to you two, three, four years ago, saying, hey, we're going to work that, that business from a one-team or, or kind of a folk, one-focused approach. And, and the one Nevada agreement, and I, I believe you guys, uh, signed off and agreed to that. It, it provides for funds, uh, or indicates that any funds you receive, uh, shall only be used to remediate the harms, impact, and risks, um, caused by the epidemic, as well as refers to a bill that was adopted in the twenty-twenty-one legislature. And as well as anything that, that might come out in, in individual litigation. Now, you can, uh, put together your plan and, and determine what and where you think is the best use of those funds. Uh, whether it's companies such as this, whether it's really trying to focus more on assisting your drug court program or, or possibly, uh, education. You know, there's, there's a list of things. And that's why I was talking about that plan, putting together a plan or, and, and then giving, giving the county staff direction as to how you'd like us to, to move forward, to, to use those funds to try and help our community.
Well, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Troy. Thanks for everybody else that spoke. And I'm not arguing with what, everybody cares. Everybody wants to do something. But I'm just going to say this and I'll call for a vote. A lot of, everything that we, we hear in terms of help, I think it's always, it always starts on a good note is because we want to help. And, and I'll bring case in point, this board, Mike, you weren't here, but there was a lady here trying to sell us on the idea of putting in vending machines to sell clean hyperdomic needles. So, so that drug addicts wouldn't use dirty needles. So so that drug addicts wouldn't use dirty needles. And there was some discussion on it, and I couldn't believe that I was actually hearing the discussion. Why would we use taxpayers' dollars to put in a vending machine to where somebody we dis-enabled, right? So it's just, again, it's just my whole problem that I have with it is the fact that we're using taxpayers' dollars. Not that what you're trying to do, Troy, is bad, not that the problems that, uh, Denise has or or the Sheriff's Department has, I'm not arguing that point. I just don't think it's a place for taxpayer dollars.
No, and I understand it. Like she said, I mean, if if you guys gave us this trial run, that's all we need.
Well, I'm gonna ask that. I'm gonna call for a vote, but I would ask that it is if this board does approve it, is that we. Look at the statistics of the organization to say that these taxpayer dollars are probably being spent effectively. Um, I would, I that would just be a suggestion of mine. Yes.
Brian, you know, uh, speaking not from my position as building official, but as a citizen and a certified professional coach, no offense. Troy, I don't know what your credentials are, but I agree with Mike a hundred percent. It's great for a trial run and doing all that. Uh, there's coaching weekend lawyers that get a six-week certification, and there's real coaches. They get real certification from CPA, the type of coaching organization out there that is certified. Big difference between them. And I've seen coaches, whether they're life health or leadership coaches, that destroy careers and make people worse. I've watched it happen. And then you look at their certifications. And they just don't have, there there's some certification that they that they put in place that that is not certified by anyone or or licensed. Not saying that.
No, no, yeah.
But certified coaches are highly trained in knowing the difference between moving people forward, which is coaching. Or living in the past, which is trauma. And we're also trained highly in knowing, hey, you need to see a therapist. Okay, and that and there's months of training that goes into even knowing that, but we can never really coach on the trauma because we're not trained therapists. So just wanna put that out there that you gotta be very careful, and Mike's one hundred percent correct, you gotta you gotta vet these qualifications.
I got one more thing, Brian. Before we go to vote, I. I would like, I I believe, number one, they, the paperwork has to be in line for our legal.
I would agree with that.
Um, number two, I I also think that it, there has to be for this program, this is one small piece of of treatment. I mean, everybody's hit that. So the criteria, I I would like to see the specifics of your admission criteria in your program. It can't be, we we can't have, you you this could go on to everything that the county has. Because I I know we can't open, you'd like to open the door to every family that comes through, but. I mean, I still believe there's criteria that meets your program. And it has to be a a assessment piece for that and and everything else. And I just, I don't see it in here, you know? The the fees are very, very reasonable, you know? I I I just, I think there's some more work that needs to be done before I honestly could go for support or non-support of 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 this issue. I I like it. I I think you're close, but I I just, like I said, to me, I just can't, you know, I gotta support Bert. I mean, we're paying taxpayer money and and supporting the courts and everything else, and I know there is other funding out there. Once you get certain criteria and and certifications, there is money coming in, so also off of that, that's where our money has to back off.
Sure, oh yeah.
You know, if if you're getting reimbursed, you know, the, out of your eighty-three thirty-three rate.
Right.
I can't continue to 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 agree to pay eighty-three thirty-three when you're you're gonna get forty dollars reimbursement a day. Uh, at that rate, I I can't see that it wouldn't be fully reimbursed.
Sure.
And the program's wide open, but you still have to meet the mission criteria.
Well, a hundred percent, you know, yeah, I have no problem providing you the program itself and, uh, you know, with the nonprofit. The opioid funding that's only gonna last for so long. We, I still wanted to sponsor Lander County clients to come through our program, we're a nonprofit. Like, that was never my intent to just, you know, piggyback off the taxpayer money whatsoever. My intent was to have families in in Lander County that most likely do not have the financial need or insurances to pay for treatment. To come through and get help, but that's, yeah.
Well, thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Mike, thanks for your comment.
Yeah, I think that after all of the proper vetting and everything, all of that, all the issues are complete. And if it's good with, you know, um, with Mike and almost, then all the bugs are worked out. That it can be re, that it can be revisited, but I think that all of those, because I'm all for, you know, because I've watched, as has Robert. And drawn, you know, three generations of families come through. Um, I was a corner for many years and dealt with, you know, the people who. Why the opioid issue is in front of us and why that money is there. But I also, uh, um, on that, on that note, those people who have passed and why those that immaterial money there. I wanna make sure that that money is being spent in the best mo, the best way it can be utilized. So like I said, I'm not against it, but I definitely think I just would feel better, um, I was a little not my really. If if all the vetting is done and all the Ts are crossed and the Is are dotted, then there, I don't have a problem. But I that all those answers happen, all the certificates for anybody who needs it, you know, whether it be the clinician. Or whom it may be, I ha, I would rather see all of that stuff, um, done, and all your ducks in a row. And then I'm all, I'm all for it, I, okay?
No, I I I agree. I, we have those. Like that gentleman said, I I do agree with him a hundred percent. I didn't take any of that personally because that's. You know, that's all the point of us getting certified and everything that we have, all these trades, because last thing we wanna do is deteriorate somebody's progress just because. Of lack of training. And and that's not, yeah, so like our coaches are certified, you know, beer sports certified. That, I mean, but yeah, we'll provide all that documents for you guys. I appreciate you, your time, and, uh, yeah, thank you.
I appreciate you. Thank you very much.
So I'll I'll put it to the commission. You guys want to, is there a motion? Or is there some direction or where do you wanna take it?
I would prefer that it be tried, uh, vetted, probably, you know, as the very best that we can and all, everything done before it's brought back. You know, at that time, you know, the county manager and, um, Michael thinks that everything is in in. Over our ducks or his ducks are in a row then that was revisited, because I absolutely am for anything that can help people. But I wanna make sure also that this money is being utilized properly.
So basically, you're you're, uh, basically suggesting that we just make sure all the legal forms and stuff are in place before we ask for a call from the board? How do you feel about that?
Uh, yep.
Okay, good. Alright, so that's what we'll do. We'll just go ahead and, uh, we'll defer at such time, then we'll bring it back on Troy and call for a vote on it, okay?
Hey, I appreciate you guys. Thank you very much.
And and just for the record, I'd like the commission to know that that is exactly what myself and Michael have been working on. It's just a matter of, uh, you know, some of this was brought to light today that they do have it, and now we just need to put it into into black and white.
And to be fair, I I suck at paperwork, you know.
Yeah, so we, uh, we'll we'll continue working towards that.
Sure.
Troy, do you have a business card?
I, uh, no, I mean, I'll, 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 I'll.
So we're gonna go ahead and, uh, go to break. So we're gonna go ahead and call it back to order.
This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, so we're gonna move on here with item twelve for discussion of possible action to get direction regarding employee survey previously approved. To either move forward with anonymous versus confidential or to renegotiate other options, including possibly vacating previous employee survey approval. Okay, so who wants to tell us where we're at on this?
So, in your backup, you have a memo from me and you have an email chain with the company that was approved to do our survey.
Right.
Um, I was under the understanding this was an anonymous survey, um, when he asked me for all employees' information, their departments. And all their contacts, so that they could contact them directly to start this. We got into a discussion and that's where the email comes in, where he says, you're talking about an anonymous survey. And this is not an anonymous survey, this is actually just a confidential one. And then they also admit that they would receive some sensitive information by doing their survey and that they would not even give us that information. So I had a concern and told them I was bringing it back to the board. I do have Phil with the union here, so, um. You guys just need to give me direction.
Yeah, so I, so I have some questions. I'd like to ask maybe some of the actual elected officials, Denise, Ron, uh, Bill. And if I'm losing sight of anybody else, is that, so this is gonna be a survey, if it's approved, it's gonna be your departments as well. Um, how do you feel about it? I still have the problem of spending the twelve thousand dollars to do it. But yeah, I'd like to ask your guys' input on it. Are you okay with the survey? Would you like to see that happen?
I think if they do, do I have to come up or am I?
Well, just state your name for the record.
Okay, uh, Denise Fortune, uh, just like the P Sergeant at Justice Court. Um. When it comes to things like this, it doesn't affect the some of us as much as the others. Um, just because we're pretty close to that thing. I do agree if there's gonna be a survey, um, I think it should be one hundred percent confidential from everybody. Um, I've heard some things about it. I haven't really looked into it or I don't know a whole lot about this survey. Or what you guys were trying to do or trying to do, uh, to. For the, to get the results of them, you know, I'm I'm not real sure of that. But I think if they're gonna ask any employee to say, mine included, you know, they could put on their, I'm a raging lunatic. You know, I mean, I just think that whatever, if they do do one, that it should one hundred percent be confidential. I don't think anybody should know. I think people have more, um, apt to be honest. If they know that there's not gonna be repercussions from what they say. Cause anybody can tell us to our face, yeah, you're a great boss and we love you, but yet behind our back say other things that we're not aware of. And that's okay. That should be their right to do that. Um, but I think it should all be one hundred percent confidential.
So let me just clarify that. You're saying confidential and the survey that has been approved is confidential. What I was asking for was an anonymous one, an anonymous one where no one knows who submitted anything. A confidential one is that this company will know exactly who submitted what survey.
And they're the only ones.
No, then they submit it and they have the information. So a confidential and anonymous are completely different.
Can we do it to where it's anonymous and confidential?
Well, anonymous is confidential.
The problem, you don't have it, cause you don't have the backup, I, but.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
He, uh, he explained, well.
No, he explains the difference between anonymous and confidential. The anonymous is where they would actually just be able to go in and fill out a survey at any time. Uh, what I wanted to do was open up the community meeting room for one or two days. Put a mass memo out to the entire email, to the entire county employees and tell them, this is opened up. If you want to go do this survey, these are the times that it's open to go, you can go in there, you can do it. Even if we do it on a location that doesn't have a camera site. Um, this company said that's not what they want to do. What they wanna do is they want to have the direct contact to the employee themselves and then tell them how they're gonna do the survey.
Because they wanna be able to track it.
Correct.
It would be.
Confidential.
It would be like having the ballot box there and then somebody could stuff the ballot box. Is what the concern is in an anonymous. So they wanna be able to track it as the company, but they would not share that with the client, that is with the county. That part of it, they just want it for tracking purposes. That's that's the difference.
Well, well, let me ask you this. I had this idea that popped in my head was, no matter if we do it anonymous, confidential. You can't force somebody to do the survey, so what to say, only a fraction of your people do the survey. And there are people that, because people, when they're pissed off, they usually like to speak up, people that are just working hard and don't have a problem with it. They don't see anything. They're just busy with their life. What, in a, in a situation like that, how do you, how do you, the results are skewed, right? So and then we spent twelve thousand dollars to get that skewed result. That's my problem, is spending taxpayer's dollars to do this survey.
Well, what's the, what's the purpose of this survey? Who's gonna use?
Well, that's the point, was I, it was the, it was the majority of the commission voted on it, wasn't unanimous, but they wanted to get a pulse of. Our Lander County employees happy.
I.
Yes, Mike.
I I was one of the firm believers in it. I I supported it, pushed it. Um, I've learned a lot since, uh, talking with Liz and reading, you know, reading that letter. I didn't know that. Um, also, I believe it's a firm marketing tool. It also goes out to, with the ability to say, hey, this is what the employees think. You know, it, is this, uh, it's a great place to work. When we're looking for employees and everything else competing with mines and five hundred more coming in, it might not affect us much. But I I mean, with the lithium plant coming in, there's people that go over with a man camp and that. I I mean, I I believe it also can neutralize still the belief that there's thing, that government wants to hide stuff and everything else. I I think it shows support that, you know, I I would hope that it ain't all the disgruntled. I've been through several of them. I I've never really experienced a bad result. You know, I I thought the twelve thousand at the time, it ain't the right company. I I know we were gonna talk to the officials, but I think there's ways to change it. I I kinda talked with 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 Liz and Bert a little bit about it. Um, after I read some of this stuff, cause I've had some questions. I I think just, just like Liz said, you know, I I asked, what if we do it? Give them a piece of paper, the the commission and 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 Bert and Liz, ask the questions. Simple at the end, if you want a documentation is, what do you like best about Lander County? What do you think could be approved? I never was out to to say that my supervisor is a is a is a fool or an idiot or 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 this. So we do that. Like I said, I I I asked Liz to ask the union rep if it's just the survey put out on a, on a, on. If it comes down to two pieces of paper with the questions, at the, it comes in a manila envelope, it's self-addressed. So there ain't no questions or concerns about getting caught on a camera of putting them in. They do their survey, if they wanna take it home and do it and drop it off at the post office, it comes back to, through through mail. We open them up and and look at them or or pick a a committee that that meets state. Cause I asked first for like, you know, if we could devise the questions in a closed meeting, legal advised, absolutely not. So like I said, that 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 question was answered and see, if it's nine employees, turn it in, then I I guess. That's what it is, but it still gives it, you know, it could be a simple one through five star rating or anything like that. I mean, most private companies do them all the time. I I didn't, I didn't know it was this difficult. And like I said, but I also found out after Liz told me that most companies do ask. In the back, at background, ask names, so private's different than public, you know, union and stuff like that. So that 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 was my compromise, and it's at very little cost to the county, very little cost to the taxpayers. But also gives us something to put on the website to say, you know what, this is it. But and and, uh, some of the ideas of of this came from after the way Brian interviewed. I mean, I would hope we could capture that as as a group. And if there's little things, uh, Liz brought up that, you know, we haven't sent out what a compensate, you know, the compensation packages of what each employee has. You know, the questions, you know, do what, you know, do you like to see something better in benefits, uh, you know, uh, anything like that. I mean, we we could devise the questions we want, that we think, and have the discussion in here and and do it. And it'd be a minimal fee to to us if 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 that's the way we wanna proceed.
First off, I'd like to apologize, Molly, who's also also elected official in the room, so I didn't recognize you, I'm sorry, so. And then I I'd like to, I mean, just out of my own, my own little world and dealing with people, I I think Lander County has a great reputation. I got people, I got two personal acquaintances of mine that are like wanting to come to work for Lander County. How do I come to work for Lander County? We wanna get out of the mines. It's like, you know, we have outstanding benefits, Pers is unbeatable, and Lander County truly is a great place to work for. So it's just, I just, yeah, I just don't, I don't know. I just, I don't personally see the need for it, but again, I'm I'm one person and, uh, that's what we're here doing is hashing it out. Phil, did you have something to say?
Yeah, excuse me, I'll speak on this. Um, this came up, Phil Harris, the director. Um, I'm definitely a very veteran of the employees in Lander County. This conversation came up some months ago and I I kinda gave you my opinions on when that happened. And I agree with you, Mike, I know what you're looking for. The thing I saw when I first heard of this was, is the calls that I received were that they're targeting me. The employees were afraid that they were looking for something, there was gonna be a witch hunt of some sort, that if they filled this survey out. You as commissioners or their supervisors or whoever was gonna come and target them for something that they had said in this survey. So with that, some of the retort that I got back from that was, well, I'll just falsify the document, I don't even do it. Or I'll just put some false answers in there, or I'll, you know, I won't even do it one too. So you'll have that. I mean, if you're looking for happy employees to put on the website, just pull them itself. Hey, this employee loves working here and put that on your website, if that's what you're looking for. Um, and that's kinda where we're at. I mean, I think if you're gonna do the survey, do it anonymous, you know?
Well, that's about the best I could come up with.
And if you're gonna do it, do it so it's, you know, are you looking for, are you looking for a a bad boss or a bad supervisor? Or are you looking for happy employees that are truly happy to work here? And that's, you know, I guess that's where you have to draw the line on what you're looking for in the surveys. And for me, I'm gonna hear all that talk because that's who they're gonna call me first and say, hey, you know, what's going on with the survey? You know, I'm not doing this, whatever the case may be, but. Um, and as far as some of the things you stated, as far as the benefits go, those are all negotiated things that we work with. those are all negotiated things that we work with, and we're working very well with Bert and Liz, and with the county, and I'm happy to say that we do have one of the best insurance plans in, in the state, really, as far as what the employees get out of that. And, yeah, it's, I mean, people can go to the website and look for jobs, I mean, post the jobs like you do, and that's that, but... That's some of the things I have heard, and Liz and I talked about this quite frankly. I agree with you, Brian, that, you know, it's, it's a cost, thirteen thousand dollars is a huge cost, when it can be done probably in a cheaper format, you know, in an anonymous survey, or something in-house, or... There's all kinds of surveys out there that you can do, with your phone, there's plenty of apps out there that may be anonymous, I mean, there's other ways to save money to do that, so, just my opinions, so, hope that helps.
Thank you, Phil, it's important to hear from you, so...
Robert will have something to say.
Yeah, Robert.
Robert, quick to the sheriff's office, so, the sheriff doesn't have an opinion one way or another whether the county wants to do the survey, we just have a couple of points to bring up. The cost that's associated with this, with this company is ridiculous. We've done surveys, and we've used, there's websites that do surveys, you can do free, you can actually pay the website for under a thousand dollars a year, and do as many surveys as you want, and they're anonymous. If you don't put the question in, "What's your name?", nobody knows, it's not specific to a person. The fact that, that this company potentially will keep some sort of personal information or company is ridiculous. It's not necessary. Now, the county wants to afford, the county can do it themselves, do five star ratings. Employees don't have to, have to participate, either they do or they don't, they do simple, non-mandatory, non-mandatory fields, fill out what you want to, or what you don't want, if you're looking for that. But it's, I think it's an overreach for the spending.
Yeah, of course. Well, thank you for that, and then that would be my next question, so, we're, so basically, we set policy, and we, and we can, and we control the finances for taxpayers. So we get all this data back, at what point then do, does it become our county manager or HR to say, "Okay", is that something that they would look at and say, "Okay, we might have a potential area here", and then with their discussion with us, we might formulate a policy, I mean, how does that all work? I mean, what do you do with the data once you have it? And based off, what percentage are you going to act on data, that's what I'm saying. It's, it's just a lot of questions I have about the survey, and then once you get it, what do you do? Is it a true survey, is it true statistics? Yes, ma'am.
And Brian, I agree with Phil, I think this is more of the thing, I mean, the elected officials can leave their opinion all they want, but I think it's more of what you guys want. You wanna know if working for the Lander County, working for Lander County is, is great. Well, most of us that are still here, yes, working for Lander County is very great. And if that's what you guys are trying to figure out, is just working for county, our benefits, our, everything that we have within the county, if you're trying to get that information, then I think that is specifically what you would ask. I think the other, which I was thinking, people just doing random things. I think it should be more of an employee question, are the employees happy? The commissioners get voted in, the elected officials get pointed in, other people get appointed. It's the employees that we should be asking, because, to be honest, most of the employees that work in this building, and this is just my two cents, and what I've seen in the hundred years I've been here, their problem is not with Lander County, their problems aren't with even their bosses. Their problems are personal issues with other employees or other departments. Things, the way things have been handled, or being handled, or whatever. So I think that's more of a question for the employees, and, and if you guys just wanna find out what, working for Lander County, if that's a benefit, ask anybody that works for Lander County, we're all gonna be honest, if we weren't happy working for the county, we wouldn't still be here.
And we'd have a high turnover rate, which we don't, yeah, so, exactly.
Well, and I have a huge issue with anybody having any information of anyone, I just, that's just absolute, I trust no one with anybody's information, and I just, I would, I would never ask an employee to give that kind of information in this day and age, trust no one, and so, that's my, that's my huge issue.
Thank you, Kathy Bert.
You guys know I'm neutral on it, it doesn't matter to me which way you go, but I will tell you that, when you interview somebody and you ask them, "How was your last job?", they say, "Oh, it was the greatest place I ever worked, I just had to go because of this or that", usually when they come to work for you, it's the greatest place I've ever worked as well. When you interview them and they say, "You know, that place was terrible", when they get here, "This place is terrible too", right, like, they, individuals create their own atmosphere to some degree, and we're good with doing whatever, whatever you guys wanna direct us to do, but you, you often find that if somebody comes from somewhere that's great, it's great the next place they go. And, and it's great everywhere else they go, even if they have some conflict with, with one or two individuals, they, they make great out of great, and the people who don't, they just aren't gunning. And, and it doesn't matter where you put them, or what incentives you give them, they're never gonna be happy, and them are also the same people who won't go directly to another individual and say, "Hey, you know, this, this kinda bothered me, I'd like to work this out". That gets separated out in the, in the wash, and everybody kinda finds some common ground, and you can work together. But I keep going back to this, the whisper campaigns that run throughout this community kill relationships, that never had a chance, because they never got discussed openly, and I am not for encouraging whisper campaigns. That's, that's just me, I think that every person that I've had a direct communication with, whether they left not liking me at all, or whether we agreed to disagree, or whether we finally found common ground, and then we became friends, at least we knew where each other stood. It's the ones who were whispered about, and they've made an opinion based off of hearsay, that is what kills the, the good in this community, and I'm not a part of supporting that personally. But we'll do whatever survey you want.
Thank you, Bert.
My suggestion is we don't, we just, I mean, I think it's a huge waste of time, it's a huge waste of discussion, and that we just move on, and we just do not do this survey.
Well, let me make sure there's no more discussion, then I'll open it for a motion. Is there any other public comment, yes, sir?
It appears to me, listening to this...
Can you say your name for the record, sir?
Not before.
Okay, thank you.
It appears to me, on the surface, listening to this, you're trying to fix a problem that doesn't exist.
Thank you.
You've got a lot of long-time employees in this county, that have worked their whole lives, here, Jerry's a good example, and, I don't know, doesn't seem like there's a problem. Do you have a problem getting employees?
I don't know, do we? My name, just remind people of how this came about, my recollection, please correct me if you think I'm wrong, my recollection is that Patsy brought this up strongly, Mike supported her strongly, and I think two of you were against it strongly, and JR tipped, tipped the scale. That's my recollection. And he only barely tipped the scale, he wasn't enthusiastic, a lot would've depended on how it was done. Well, now we're running into the how it's going to be done, and there's the rub, which of course...
Well, we can vacate it too, 'cause it's, it's, it's nice for vacating this whole thing, so I think...
No, but I, I just wanna point out that it was a good faith thing, I think, on the part of the people that proposed it. There are things that can come out of it. I'm completely neutral in it, I think my employees should be able to participate in any survey they want, without me getting involved, and I would be open to letting them do that. I'm okay with either the confidential or the anonymous. I understand the tracking because of what we've been through with elections since the Wuhan virus came around, because that's what an election is, if you think about it, it's a survey. Do you like the person in office, or, you know, do you like this other person, so on? So, I don't have any dog in the fight, really, I'm just pointing out, this was something that I think was embarked on in good faith, and it can be used if it's properly done, but I definitely agree with Mike, this is awfully expensive, and it can be done cheaper. And also, the undershare of pointing that out, it can be done a lot cheaper and easier.
And can websites give your web, your email? That's easy, you know, I mean, you go to anything on the internet, it's still trackable. I mean, in all reality, it was, it was purely good faith. It, that, I look for the data to be able to put out there on, on Brian's statement, that's the data is, this is, this is what the group of people say. And also, when you're out there on town, and, and as an employee, if, if they come and, you know, wanna gripe it, and they won't go to their farm, and it's like, "Hey", you know, still eighty percent think this is a successful place, so, yeah. I mean, I ain't afraid to have the conversation, it might not be the right place for you, right? I mean, the people move around, so on, so forth, that's, that was my support for it. It wasn't a witch hunt, it wasn't to go against supervisors, it's also to, to, to support what goes on here. So if, definitely the, is to approve the company, the company's wrong, totally wrong. It is not the right company. All of them are gonna ask the same, I did research that, pretty much find out, so, to use a, a, a company at any expense, the, the internet piece really ain't confidential either. You know, i- is it a piece of paper, are we gonna get it? I mean, you're still gonna be criticized thinking about it after I talked with, with Liz and Bert, is, is the fact that you're still gonna have criticism, well, you guys open them, I mean, you can open them in public, and you still get criticism, so, I mean, it, it is what it is, I'm, I'm fine with whichever way we decide.
Thank you, Mike, so I, I'd like to just state, I was against it day one, because of the cost, I have to agree with Mr. DeFor, trying to fix something, there were no problems, because if there was a problem, we'd have turnover, people would be buzzing, buzzing me at work, "Hey, I got this, I got this, I got this", other people would be hearing it, that might justify, "Hey, we need to look into this, we need to do a survey, 'cause there is an issue, right, there's buzz", there's no buzz, I got people asking me, "How do I come to work for the county? I wanna leave the mine, I hate my job, I wanna come to work for the county", so, I'll leave it at that, and I'll hear a motion, if there's a motion on it.
I wanna say a word first. I was all for this survey, but if it's not gonna be anonymous, I'm not for it at all. That's, that, that just blows the whole idea of having a survey, what the people think. Their name don't need, or their whatever, don't need to come up on that, that's not right. It should be totally anonymous, and I think we could do it probably in-house, if you wanted to, come up with some little program, that people can fill out a questionnaire, or whatever, and that's the end of it. And we can, we can find out what the people think, which is great. And I think most of the employees that I've talked to for the county all love the place, so...
Thank you, Jared. So is there a motion, Kathy, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we vacate the survey, and then...
I'll second it.
So we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Is this for the whole survey?
At this point, I believe too, until we can come out, you know, later on, I think it's, it's taking up a lot of time of trying to figure out, 'cause there's things like Survey Monkey and stuff like, we can figure out at another time. I think that vacating it, it gives the whole idea forward now, it can always be brought back if needed.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're vacating it. So we'll move to item thirteen, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove allowing Lander County retiree employees to purchase health insurance at their own cost up to age sixty-five compliant with NRS 287023. So, the last time we had this meeting, our counselor made it very clear that, as commissioners, myself specifically, that I would benefit from this, so I'm going to recuse myself from having any discussion on this item, so...
And I, with that, I do as well, and when I, as I do very often, makes people laugh, that when I turned myself into the ethics board to find out if I was doing this wrong by having this conversation, the one thing that they did say, and so I don't know how you get around this, or how anyone has gotten around it before, one of the conversations, the piece from the ethics board was, you have to figure out, because every single person on the board actually has a chance to benefit from it, unless you have a place, you do, because if you haven't put in, haven't put in place the, the number of years of service, then after so many years, if you've been on the board, say, twelve years, everybody has the, or eight, even eight, and you're sixty, over sixty-five years old, everyone has that, and so it has to, and their idea was to have a conversation with the district attorney's office to try to figure out how you do this, and within ethically doing it, but they said everyone who has dealt with this issue, regardless if it's Washoe County, Clark County, they've had to figure out how to do this. And so I think that we need to have that figured out, because ultimately, all of us, you know, if these, everybody's re-elected, can benefit, so we, at this point, we all have to recuse ourselves for many sake. So I don't know if that's something that we turn over at this time to the district attorney's office to try to figure that out, so we don't get ourselves in a pickle.
Explain to me how that would help me, I'm at past sixty-five.
Well, you are, well, you're past sixty-five, I, I, well, but, well, so it ends up, I don't know how am I, how am I, is, but I mean, there'd be one, you know, two people, and you can't do anything with that, and so, I don't know, that's something for legal to, to, to tell us, but, but if you're not sixty-five, and you're, you know, you have so many years, and you're vested, then you do have an interest in it, how do we, you know, how does Clark County commissioners, how did Washoe County, how did they all, they were able to figure that out, and it's something that needs to be figured out, so we don't get ourselves in trouble, so...
I'm one year in, so, I mean, I don't see it, but my, my concern is still the increased medical to where, you know, like I said...
So I think what she's saying is...
What's it gonna cost the county in the long run?
I think what she's saying is if you, when you're talking about it, if you don't put a year stipulation on it, then those of you that are under sixty-five would be able to benefit it.
Or your years of service, if you don't, you know, from the gets go, in the motion, I think, I think that in, in the motion that it stated from the very beginning, how many years of service, that allows all of you to be able to discuss it. I have to stay out of it, but all three of you can discuss it at that point for years of service, because, you say, for example, twenty years, twenty-five years, or whatever, that, that had have, would have to be in the motion to begin with. Am I correct in saying that, or not? Then at that time, it opens it up, because the years of service, he's gonna fall, all three of them will fall under that, and if they don't, then they would be over sixty-five, so it wouldn't matter. Am I correct in thinking that, Liz? Bill?
In terms of there being a potential conflict of interest, anytime you're dealing with the benefits, since the commissioners get the benefits as well, that is any, any of our benefits, it's there, I'm not even sure you need to mention it, because it's like, it goes with the territory, you're, you're public employees too, that is your elected officials, so you've got, you, you're the same as anybody else. So, other than, I would suggest you acknowledge that, I don't think that prohibits you from voting on things, 'cause otherwise, there's a whole host of things you couldn't vote on, and that, that's, it's starting to get ridiculous.
Well, well, that's what concerns me directly, Bill, I'm not speaking on this item exactly, I'm speaking on the last meeting, when you stated on the record that it would, I would have direct benefit, basically, I'm no longer in their safe harbor, so it's just, it's just because I would have direct benefit, so I'm just, at this point, I'm choosing to accuse myself from having any discussion on it, because I don't wanna have to face an ethics violation on it, so, until somebody can tell me otherwise. It, it mean it comes out of my pocket, if somebody's paying for it, it's me, it's not Lander County, so it's, I'm sorry, but I'm recusing myself.
So how do we resolve this?
This doesn't have to be voted on.
Can we make a recommendation that you, people that wanna retire, say, three years early, can buy insurance until their retirement age?
Well, from what, Kathy, did you recuse yourself today?
Yeah, I had to recuse myself.
So from my understanding, you've only got two commissioners, so nothing can happen today.
Okay. And if it does come back up, we can request that we get the, the numbers, an estimate of what this is gonna increase.
Yeah, there, you still have all the backup from the last meeting, you did ask Tim if we went forward with this, if it would cause the premiums to go up, and he did say, yes, it would cause the premiums to go up. He has sent me an email, it's kinda the same stuff that we have in the past. There was some stuff that you wanted the DA to look at, he, I don't, to my knowledge, know if he's done that yet or not, but Tim did say it would cost the premiums, it would raise our rates.
Okay, so, motion for just side and dice, so we'll move on. Okay, so, uh, motion for just item dice, so we'll move, we'll move into item fourteen. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the renewal of the inter local contract between the state and Nevada Division of Public Behavioral Health, DPBH, Community Health Services Program in Lander County. So, we've been, uh, this one's been on a few agendas, we've been beating it up, so where are we at with it?
So it was on the Board of Health meeting at the last commission meeting, and that was when, uh, our, um, health, uh, official, Dr. Ross, recommended that we pay this, and then start working towards taking over all the responsibilities and having the documentation to support us taking that over where we aren't being billed for this come next year.
Okay, so there's some steps that we need to take.
In order to show that they aren't, that they aren't providing them services, and that we have been, so then we no longer pay them.
Okay, so, um, all right, so, are there any questions, commission? Public comment on the item?
So, so is the motion, is, is, so the discussion of this, Bert, is to, to stop this contract or carry it out till we get everything in place?
Yes, we have to carry it out until we get everything in place, and prove to the state that we're actually have that in place for them to remove the, the levying of the, of the funds from us.
So how long would, so do we put a date on this, or is this something that we're?
Well, it would be the contract date, which is-
Date in the contract, yeah.
Because we have to, uh, it would be-
I'm drawing it back to July one.
Back to July one?
And what's the term on it, you know?
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the-
Oh, so it's a one year?
I think it's a one year, I don't-
It's a one year?
Well, I've got it as two.
No, it's two year, it says two year, so effective July one, twenty twenty-three, June thirty, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah. So.
We're gonna, we're gonna try to request the state to-
Be prior to that, because we do have an out clause, correct?
Yeah.
Well, I don't know that to be fact.
Bill has it. We do.
Bill's reviewing that right now.
You can terminate, I think this is the same as the previous one.
So I believe by NRS, unless we prove to them that we are taking over these responsibilities and can show that, we have to pay this bill, it's, it's just a-
And we have to file exemptions.
Yes.
Of which we have not done.
So we have to, so Bill, we have to renew this contract and, and, but what is the out?
Well, you've got a thirty-day out on this, so you can, you can bail out at any time, once, once you got everything in place.
Okay.
That's in, if anybody wants to see it, that's in termination, item four in the contract, in the backup, page three.
Right. Okay, there's no more questions, we'll hear a motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the renewal of the interlocal contract between the state and Nevada Division of Public Behavioral Health, DPBH, Community Health Services and Program in Lander County.
Motion, a second?
I'll second it.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll move to item-
Fifteen.
Fifteen. Review consideration and possible action on division of land into large parcels, number two-three dash oh one filed by Nickel Jones Incorporated to divide APN zero-one-zero dash three-eight-zero dash four-zero, a one-sixty-five-point-eight-oh acre parcel into four forty-plus acre parcels located in section thirty-one, township thirty-two, north range forty-eight east. This was approved by the planning commission on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three with the following conditions. One, division of land into large parcels to be recorded with Lander County Recorder's Office within one year approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners, and that was the only requirement.
Good luck, commissioners, um, thank you, this is Shelby, not for the record. Um, so we do have Ryan Cook with Summit Engineering who prepared the map, uh, as well as, um, a couple of the property owners on the phone who had anything to add. Uh, the planning commission approved a waiver for the designated map for the division of large parcels at this same meeting. Um, and so this is just kind of a final step for approval.
Okay, does the commission have any questions? Public, does there any comment on the issue? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the division of land into large parcels, number twenty-three dash zero-one filed by Nickel Jones Incorporated to divide APN zero-one-zero dash three-eight-zero dash forty, a one-hundred-sixty-five-point-eight acre parcel into four forty-acre parcels located in section thirty-one, township thirty-two, north range forty-eight east. This was with the requirement that the division of land into large parcels to be recorded with that, with the Lander County Recorder's Office in one year of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners.
Right, we have a motion, and we have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, there you go. So sixteen, commissioners, review, consideration, and possible action on parcel map, number twenty-three dash oh four filed by James and Nancy Bear to divide APN zero-one-zero dash two-eight-zero dash three-seven, a fourteen-point-seven-one acre parcel into four parcels with an A-one-one acre agricultural zoning district. This was approved by the planning commission on October twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three with the following conditions. One, parcel map to be recorded with Lander County's Recorder's Office within one year of approval by the Lander County Commissioners. And two, required changes from Lander County Surveyor of Record made prior to consideration by the Lander County Board of Commissioners as listed in the staff report, so.
Um, so Shelby, not for the record, those, all those changes have been made to the map, and the map was included in your package.
Okay. All right, uh, commission, have any questions?
Shelby, I've got one.
Okay.
The way they've got it, they've got it phrased in the backup, you have all these required changes before the commissioners. Though, you're telling us those changes have already been done, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, if you make a motion based on what's here, it should just go through number one, the parcel map.
Yeah, they can remove condition number two.
Not do number two, okay. I just wanted to point that out to everybody, so somebody, because I know you, you read directly from the item. Nothing further?
Okay, thank you, Bill.
I have, I have a question, so taking it down to one acre parcels, does, does it, does, does it come before the, the planning board? I mean, the impact on the water wells and stuff like that, or is that further on?
So the, there, there's no one acre parcels, there's a five acre parcel and two, is it two or three? Two and a half acre parcels.
There's three.
So, yeah, so, one five acre parcel and two, or three, two and a half acre parcels, so there's nothing under one acre.
Okay. But that, is, is the water considered? I, I mean, in, in, in your guise's approval of this, I mean, is this looking to go to residential, right?
Yeah, um, so there is, uh, county water available in areas, so they won't be doing wells, and they'll be on separate systems.
Any other questions? Is there any public comment on it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
A motion to approve the action on pars- parcel map number twenty-three dash zero-four filed by James and Nancy Bear to divide APN zero-one-zero dash two-eight-zero dash three-seven, a fourteen-point-seven-one acre parcel into four four parcels within A-one-one dash acre agricultural zoning district. With, it's one that I have to do, right?
Yeah, number one.
Just condition number one.
With, 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 as long as condition one of the parcel map to be recorded with Lander County Recorder's Office within one year of approval. Did I do something wrong, Brian?
Huh?
You look.
No, you're good.
Oh.
So we have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sorry, when you looked, I thought I did it wrong.
No, you're good, buddy. Um, we'll move to item seventeen. For discussion, consideration, and possible action related to the resignation by Patsy A. Waits from the Lander County Board of Commissioners effective October thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. The acceptance of the resignation, a declaration that the Office of County Commissioner, District Three, is vacant, a request to the county clerk to certify the fact of the vacancy to the Secretary of State, a discussion regarding the process to fill the vacancy and the qualifications necessary to be appointed to the office and to authorize a county manager to write a letter to the governor to initiate the process for the appointment of a qualified person to fill the vacant office until January fifth, twenty twenty-five. So quite a bit of work we gotta do to fill that seat.
A fair amount, I think in your backup, there is a memorandum from, uh, Mr. McDonald that should support all that.
So, uh, do you have any questions, those commissioners?
Uh-uh, I got it.
Is there any public comment on the item? Okay, so, we, so basically, I don't know if we necessarily, do we need an actual motion on it, or can we just give direction?
I think you need, I'm pretty sure you need to accept the resignation.
Accept her resignation?
Yeah, that's the only thing you need to do. Well, we'll see, Mike may have more, but that's my recollection.
Yeah, I, Mike McDonald just turns off this for the record. The, uh, technically, I, I think the minimum that this board should do, uh, as far as any action is declare, accept the resignation and declare the vacancy, and, um, our, our clerk, uh, Ms. Gonzalez has, has prepared a letter already for the Secretary of State where she certifies that the office is vacant. Technically, I think she could do that without your declaration, but, but, uh, inclusion in the agenda item of, of your request to her is just essentially a formality or courtesy and an authorization, uh, for, uh, Mr. Ramos to send a letter to the governor. The, uh, as I indicated in the, in the memorandum, uh, we will have, uh, more information, uh, as to the process with the governor's office. It's my understanding that they will, uh, be involved with some form of advertisement that I think we can, uh, put on our, our website as well. And applications will be submitted through a portal or some channel, I think, online to the governor's office, and then they will, uh, make, make their selection. But we'll, we can have, uh, should have more information we can share with you and the public in the future on that, but.
If you, if you turn to his memorandum in your backup, down at the bottom, it says commissioners on the, on the first page of the memorandum, um, that can provide the basis for your motion if you wanna keep it as short and simple as possible.
Okay, uh, is there any more comment on it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Yeah, we, uh, to make this motion, you gotta approve Patsy's resignation, and then get Bert to okay to send the letter to the governor.
Okay.
The res- accept the resignation of P- Patsy A. Waits from the Lander County Board of Commissioners effective October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. The acceptance of the resignation, a declaration of the Office of County Commissioner, District Three, is vacant. A request to the county clerk to certify the fact that the vacancy of the, to the Secretary of State and disclose regarding the process to fill the vacancy and the qualification necessary to be appointed to the office of the, and to authorize the county manager to write a letter to the governor to invite the process for the appointment of a qualified person to fill the vacant office until January fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, awesome, thanks, Mike.
Love you.
Uh, eighteen, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove annual parade of lights on December second. The parade will start at six PM, roads to be closed will be Front Street, Broad Street, Eighth Street, and Altonburg, ending at the Oakwood Park. Well, hello.
Hello, Katie Stewart, for the record.
So, looks like everybody signed off on it?
Yes.
Okay, if there, are there any questions, commission? Public, have any questions? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the annual parade of lights on December second. The parade will start at six PM, and the roads to be closed will be, um, Forest, Broad, Eighth Street, Altonburg, ending at Oakwood Park.
A second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Very good, you waited around all for that.
Yeah, thank you.
I still need a second for that.
Yeah.
We'll get a sign for you. So we'll move into item nineteen, for discussion and, uh, possible action to get direction from the board and/or authorization to renew or make application for a new lease agreement with BLM on behalf of the Lander Remote Control Club flying facility, and to renew or make application to BLM for the right of way to access the leased land.
Good morning, commissioners, my name is Marcus Custer. Tom, before.
So, um, so we're talking about the little cleared land out there, you go to the gun club off to the left. I think it was used for flying-
Mercy airplanes.
Yes, that's right, so, basically, if I'm not mistaken, we have to update the application of BLM.
So, there's a lot of confusion on this, and I gotta apologize to these guys, because somewhere along the lines in my time here with Lander County, I've seen the paperwork where we had the right-of-way to this, we can't seem to find that. And so there's been some confusion on who has the lease and where, who's responsible for it. So, the county is what we know as of now, is that the county has had the right-of-way from the BLM to access the, the parcel and then kind of overseeing that, but it conflicts with the dates of that. Then right-of-way's expired, and then their lease is still good, so they need the county to go re-up our right-of-way lease agreements with the BLM. And I'm not sure if there's anything else in there that they will need from us, because I think the rest of it is with, uh, with the BLM. But somewhere, I've seen this, and we cannot find it everywhere we're looking, so I apologize to you guys.
It's good, we've been in touch over phone and, uh, been with the administration. Yeah, we did get from the BLM the two leases, the right-of-way in the, the field, and both, both have been expired. So, we just, you know, we'd like to have fun, and, uh, do our hobby, and get more people involved. These days is a little harder than the past, uh, but we, of course, would like to have a valid lease.
Yeah.
And if you guys can help us out, I know this goes back, because this goes back to November thirtieth of two thousand and seven. When I started in the club seven years ago, it told me there's a ninety-nine-year lease, which became more like a terminology, like, it's like endless, but nothing is endless, as we all know. And so, I looked into this, and I was like, hey, this is not right, we gotta at least make things right, and it may not be a big thing, but uh, we like to continue our hobby, obviously, and, um, so, we think it's still for both, there's a right-of-way and a lease, I don't think the lease is still valid, but, um, I don't know if you wanna-
Well, the, the, kind of the history of this was that, uh, the BLM wouldn't let us lease the land. The, the county had to do it, and the county did that, and then it was originally a five-year lease, and it renewed every five years. I came to one of those meetings here with you guys for support, and, uh, you guys, one of the commissioners, I don't remember who it was, Tom, many years ago, told me that if it's for recreation, we're for it, and don't worry about it, you don't need to wait around. And, uh, and they just renewed it, which is what happened every five years for a lot of years. And then, uh, uh, Nancy went and renegotiated the deal. She was working at the BLM for a twenty-five-year lease. I thought it was longer than that, but I wasn't in on it. But, uh, anyway, that is expired, so we need to, just need you guys to redo it for us. I don't think it's a big dollar deal, I think it's like, I can't remember right back in the day, it was like a fifty-dollar deal. So just to go on through the motions, really.
So do we need it?
Yeah, so the, so it'll actually be Donnie's, uh, you know, Public Works does all of our right-of-ways and, and the lease agreements mostly with the BLM. So we can, uh, work through that like we have in the past for our pits and everything else, and get this back up, and we'll try to get as many years as possible. I think that's what you guys are looking for, right? You're happy with the, um, and I know the county has invested some funds out there, you know, we paved a little section so they could take their drones off and things like that. Um, I believe that you guys have invested as well, you had your little oning cover and some other things, so it would, um, be beneficial to all of us if we can pursue that.
Eric, Rick, uh, also, uh, initially contributed quite a bit for Fatsy, and, and, uh, there was one time a treatment of, uh, calcium chloride out there, tried to stabilize the soil, stuff like that, so they put a considerable investment in out there, at one time.
Thank you. Um, if there's no questions, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, the lease agreement with BLM on behalf of the Lander Remote Control Club- the Lander Remote Control Club flying facility and the new, renew or make application to the BLM for the right-of-way to the access of the leased land.
Is that sufficient?
Yeah, it, I don't even know that it necessarily needs a motion. We can have a direction, and then once we have the approved lease, we'll bring it back to you guys for final approval.
Okay, so you have direction. Go ahead and get it right, and then bring it back to us.
Correct.
I was involved in the, I put the roadway in for the access to it, leveled all the fence lines and site grading, bow mount gold supplied, the blade and meat.
I have a thank you, Bill.
That was probably about ninety-three or something like that.
Been a long time ago.
And I want to thank you guys for doing all the ground, the legwork and bringing this back to us. We were not of much help to you guys, and I apologize. It's just been one of them things. So we do appreciate it. We'll make it right on our end now.
I think the long lease is what threw it off. It wasn't a five-year deal. It was heating all the time, and I think that kind of threw it off. Anyway, appreciate your assistance.
Thank you, guys.
All right, we'll move into item twenty. Correspondents, correspondence reports future agenda items.
All right.
Commissioners, any saying you like?
I do.
Okay.
One, I would like to open up for discussion, the, for discussion about possibility of an ordinance requiring trailers and trucks and the garbage trucks as well to require to be covered to go out to the landfill. The trash along the road is, I mean, the county take, the town looks beautiful, and then you go out there and there's a whole other load of trash since what, I talked to you two days ago, and I've watched the garbage truck heading out there without properly sealing up their trailer that I've watched it dump all the way out to the, to the access road to Willow Creek. I think it's something that we can't use the, the county inmates or that, correct, for stuff like that? It's hard to expect any group to pick up that amount of trash. I mean, if anybody drives out there, it's sad to, our walking path goes out there, so on and so forth, so I'd like to open that up for discussion.
I would think that there's probably, with being trash haulers, that there's probably something already on the books that they have to cover the trash. They can't just...
If the door ain't dotted, anything that ain't in that, from what it looked like to me, is what ain't pushed up in that trailer comes out, but going out to work in that, you just watch it blow out. There's currently coming in, there's an air, there's a swamp, there's a swamp cooler and several covers, and, I mean, big items that are just laying there, and the wind the other day took it from one side of the road to the other. So I, most, most places require covering the landfills. I think it's a simple solution to, I mean, especially with our walking path goes out there and there's trash all along the way.
All right.
And along with that, that walking path, because the utility, the side-by-sides and stuff are out there, they have covered most of that walking path with gravel, so I don't know who takes care of that, if that's a DOT thing or if that's us, but...
It is, but that's no problem. Anytime you see that, let us know, and we grab the little kickoff broom we have out here at the golf course, and they run it down real quick and...
I would like, if we can, some type of update on the energy company.
We are working, I will bring you guys some of that. So, we're in the correspondence section of this?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
The, Brian Hardy with, they are vetting them right now, and they have sent them a list of questions and also things that came from our building official to make sure that, you know, that they can meet some of the safety regulations and compliance that we have locally, and as soon as we get them answers, we'll have some solid answers for you guys, and if they can vet out all of that, then we will start scheduling that visit to their facilities.
Okay, there you go. So, good. Anything else?
And Brian, kind of guidance on this. So we talked with, with the recovery center today and talked about the money, the money we got from the...
Opioid settlement.
Opioid settlement. Do we need to start having, do we need to open it up to discussion on how we want to, you know, use some of them funds? You know, is it open to one group to take the whole, you know, to request the whole thing, or do we put some, can we put some guidance in it following the guidelines that are set for us, say, hey, this is what we're thinking for addiction, but this is what we're thinking for education, this is, you know, some of them things? So we have some guidance, just like we're gonna do on the, you know, on the scholarships or the grants.
Yeah, I don't want to interrupt here, but real quick, so you guys know, so yesterday we met with NACO, with Vincent and...
What was the?
Amy.
And Amy. I apologize, Amy, if you're on here listening. And they already have kind of a set deal where we can go through and mark all the boxes, so we could turn that in for compliance with the grants. And I didn't want to mention that while everybody was up here, because we haven't, don't have them in hand to make sure that they're gonna cover all them things, but we want to bring that back to you guys, so then we do go through, and we can kind of compartmentalize each one of them, and the people that we give the money to can then also fill them out. It'll save the staff a bunch of work here. We'll take that, submit it back in for our grants, and it will show our compliance. So we're right on the tip of making it over that one.
So is it, are we ready to put something like that on the agenda, so we could look at it and know?
Yeah, like I said, we just met with them yesterday, so when we get them forms, if we have them by then, we'll put it on the next agenda.
Okay, that's what I had.
Okay. Any others? Okay. All right, so we'll go into, no more? Everybody's done? We'll move into public comment. This is for non-agenda items only. Is there public comment? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thanks, everybody, for coming in.